Thank you very much. All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to officially call this meeting to order. If you all would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. All right, let's dive right into the meeting. First item on the agenda is we are discussing resolution, I mean, the Southwest Quadrant Pump Station. Bobby, I think that sounds like it's a you thing.
It is for me, Mayor. I am trying to get my camera to turn on here. I don't know why. There it goes. Keeps turning on and turning off. There we go. Mayor and Council appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. As all of you are aware, we put the, we have a permit to build and we have a full design for the Southwest Quadrant Regional Pump Station. And we put it out to public bid back in October. And we received the bids on October 29th. And we opened all of the bids. And we received three bids. And as you can see, we got three qualified bids. Flippo Construction, Johnston Construction, and Gradient Construction. In the situation, in the letter that you see from McCrone. And I believe, let me just make sure if Rob Sell, is Rob on the line tonight? Kelly, do you know?
I'm sorry, which number are you looking for?
Is Rob Sell on one of the participants? I only see plus nine, so I don't see.
I do.
Okay. Well, it doesn't matter at this point. But we had, we received three bids on there. The low bidder was Gradient Construction. And so we reviewed all the bids that day. And as you can see from Rob's letter, we had originally done an engineering estimate on the project. And the lowest bid, which was $1,196,240, was 2.61% higher than what we had done the engineering estimate. We actually felt like that was very, very good because when we have seen all of the construction increases that have taken place this year, we honestly felt like we were in the ballpark for where we thought the engineering estimate would be. And so we felt like that this was a very positive bid back for the town of La Plata. I come before you tonight to recommend that you give approval to Mr. Manuel to be able to execute a contract for, to Gradient Construction for $1,196,240. And it is based on the review of the bid packages and the recommendation of our engineer, which will also be a recommendation back to USDA. We are, as you know, applying for the USDA financing, so we would like to finance this through USDA. I know Mr. Greenville is usually on here tonight, so hopefully he would be here. But the, the big thing that I think we should do is move forward. Of course, without the full approval of USDA at this point, it would be somewhat at our risk if we went ahead and did that. But I believe we should move forward with this. I think Mr. Greenville would agree. And that as we, because we have bid this out under all of the terms, we will be submitting this entire bid package once you approve it to USDA for their approval as well. So that once we get full loan approval, then this package could be financed through USDA if we decide to use that financing. And so I come to you tonight with that recommendation and that at the business meeting, we would approve the town manager to be able to approve this contract for the construction of the Southwest Quadrant Regional Pump Station. Be happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful, thank you, Bobby. Does Council have any questions for Mr. Stahl? Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Stahl, you said if the USDA approves the loan, typically do they? And if they don't, do we have any other options? Would our ARPA funds be able to use, be used for this project?
I think we actually have several choices. I think we have the choice of using the ARPA funds would be one. The second would be to use cash that we have in our major facility fee fund balance. Since this, since this project is clearly building additional capacity into the system, so we could, we could use major facility fees for that. Or the third choice would be USDA loan money. The loan can be paid off at any time. And so I think it would be the option that we could go ahead and finance it. If we decided to use ARPA funding at a later time, we could certainly pay off the USDA loan and use the ARPA funding in that situation. But I think all of these, we have several different choices. And I would, I saw Mr. Greenville is on here. So he might want to comment on that portion as well. So I'd ask Kevin if he would comment.
Sure.
Just one other question, Mr. Greenville, before you answer. I guess my concern would be, why would we seek loan funding if we have the option to pay utilizing the ARPA funding when we have kind of struggled with, you know, what we utilize the funding for?
Yes, so Bobby, if I could.
Sure.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, our idea is before we got awarded the ARPA money, our intention was to finance this project along with several other sewer projects for a total loan of approximately $12.1 million. We still intend to do the full application. We were able to submit it. The PER and ER were finally approved in late October. So we were able to submit our application in early November and we're waiting to hear back from USDA. The nice thing is with the ARPA monies is before we close on the USDA loan, we can pay down some of the project costs with ARPA funds. So if we take out, you know, $12 million, we do a $5 million loan and a $7 million loan, that first $5 million loan we close out on, we could take, you know, $2.5, $3 million of ARPA money and just pay, put it towards there. So I think going the USDA route, while it may take us just a couple of weeks to get final approval, I think it does give us the most flexibility moving forward with, with all our options.
Thank you. I did not, I did not realize that there were other projects being considered for this USDA loan funding. So thank you for that. That makes perfect sense to me.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, Councilman Bryant Ward was asking the same question that I was going to ask, so thank you for that. My other question would, two questions would be. So assuming this is approved by, by the council and we submit the package to USDA, after that, what are the next steps? And I guess when I'm, what I'm asking really then is, when could, when could construction start?
And I will, Kevin has had more of the discussions on the financing side of this with USDA. My assumption is it's going to take several weeks for them to get the approval in the process. But our goal in this is to go ahead and execute a contract with Gradient so that we could start placing some pre-orders in the situation to get some of the material ordered here. And then sometime by about the first of the year, that we could go ahead and issue a notice to proceed on the construction side of this. So my, my goal personally from the operations side, of course, we're going to have to work through each one of those pieces to ensure that we're not moving too quickly on the operations side and falling behind on the financing side. We need to make sure that both of those two are, you know, are working together in that process. But our goal is certainly is, as quickly as we can to begin the construction process. And I'm very hopeful that before the first of the year to issue a notice to proceed in this. But if, you know, if the financing holds us back a little bit, we could, you know, we could certainly delay that a little bit. Our goal in all of this is to have the pump station completed before the first of 2023. So our goal is to complete that through a one-year process and to have this in place so that we would have the additional capacity down in the Southwest Quadrant at that time. Now, the, this is a pump station that will take into account all of the construction down there. And of course, we know that we're not going to be there right away. It's going to take quite a few years to build out the complete. So we do have this pump station on variable frequency drives that will allow us to dial back the pumps so that we're not inundating the plant and then, you know, having it kick on with the full force of the pumps. We're going to, we're put all these pumps on variable frequency drives so that they will be gradually increasing with the pumping capacity as the EDUs continue to build out down there at the Southwest Quadrant.
And then you already answered one question I was going to ask, completion date. So you've checked, checked that box. And one final question. And maybe Mr. Greenville can answer it. So what are the loan costs if we use USDA? I mean, what, is there an interest rate? And what's the payback? Or what's the amount we have to pay them every month? Or whatever the payment plans are?
Sorry, Councilman Jenkins had my microphone muted. So the terms of the loan are 40 years. If we close before the end of the year, we'll have an interest rate locked in at 1.75%. You can prepay the debt at any time with no penalty. And you're really just paying interest costs. I do think they add on maybe a slight administrative cost, but it's very low compared to, you know, the state and other, other people who tag on a little fee, so.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Challenger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say great, great job getting these bids in. And this is an exciting opportunity, it sounds like. Just Director Stahl, if you could give like a 90-second layman's explanation of how this will help our capacity as a town, current and future, just for anybody that's on the call that isn't familiar with what you've been working on. You and Kevin have been working on for a while.
Okay. As, as we have begun the development down in the Southwest Quadrant, which started actually many years ago with the, what is now the Steeplechase Development Project. That was originally purchased by the Levin family. Myron Levin started that project actually as a commercial development. And back in the 1980s, he built the current pump station that is down there today. So that pump station is almost 40 years old. It is fairly antiquated. But it is also only rated for about 300, what we call EDUs or equivalent dwelling units. So we could have 300 single-family homes or 300 attached residential plus single families, but no more than approximately 300 could go through the existing pump station. So we've known all along that we needed to replace that pump station. What we decided when we did this was to create a regional pump station that would literally pump all of the sewage for all of those projects that are down there in that Southwest Quadrant. And those include the Montero property, Dr. Montero's property, which is about 20 acres out on 301, the Baldes Cox property, which is about 20 acres out there, the Steeplechase property, which is about 575 equivalent dwelling units. It also includes the Stagecoach property, which has about 600 EDUs. And it includes the Baldes Farm, which includes 475 EDUs. It also includes the Town of La Plata's Public Works Facility and the existing Levin Commercial Property as you enter in off Catolpa Drive on the left-hand side, which also includes the High Road School. All total, with all of those properties down there in the Southwest Quadrant, there could be a maximum of about 1,890 EDUs. So what we're doing in this situation was instead of building out for just for state, excuse me, for Steeplechase and building 575, we've decided to build for the full capacity of that quadrant down there and build 1,890 EDUs into that pump station. And we put everything on variable frequency drives so that we can consistently ramp those pumps up as we need additional capacity. We didn't think it was appropriate to build a small pump station, then come back and rebuild the pump station and come back and rebuild it again. We're trying to take into account the full Southwest Quadrant at this point and move forward. Now, it will be a number of years before that builds out, but we're building a very modern pump station that we can move forward. So we're going from a pump station now that has the capacity of about 300 dwelling units. And we're moving that to a capacity of 1,890 EDUs. Does that?
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
No problem.
That's the longest 90 seconds of my life. Now, thank you so much for the thorough explanation. It is very important for our, for us to understand as well as our residents to understand. And you know, I always appreciate your explanations. Mr. Goldsmith, do you have anything to say? Because you know what, for once I don't. Because it was so good.
Basically, I think, as Kevin indicated earlier, it's nice to keep our options open. I think the USDA loan does that for us at this point in time.
Wonderful. So I'm going to ask council if, what your will is, if your will is to forward this on to Mr. Manuel so we can see it again next week to give him the authority? Or if it is not? So I'm going to go down the line. Councilman Goldsmith?
It's my will.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes, I agree with that.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, and thanks for all the work behind this to getting this forward like this. Thank you.
And I am, I agree as well. So we'll move that forward and we'll see you again next week. Thank you very much, Director Stahl. But don't go anywhere. Yet, there's more.
I'm right here.
You're right on again. The next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. In the next one, we, interestingly enough, as all of the manufacturing in this country has seen delays in everything, we are having a tremendous delay in the manufacture of our new trash containers. As all of you were aware, when you first came on the council in June, we purchased about 600 new trash containers. Here we are in November and those trash containers still have not been delivered. And they're still indicating to us that we're six to eight weeks out. So we have had some discussions on the operations side of things. And we are afraid, there was a terrible problem last year in the plastics manufacturing business. Most of the plastic in this country is manufactured in the chemical manufacturing area of Texas. And last year, when the big freeze happened down in Texas, it really impacted dramatically the amount of plastic and the plastic particles that are necessary for making the trash cans. And so everything was shut down for three to four months last winter. And all of those delays have backed up any kind of plastic manufacturing and have really created some tremendous delays. Where we felt we were in very good shape, we're actually running very low on containers right now. And we've actually run out of some. So in looking at this, we decided to bring this forward to you because we want to stay ahead of the curve. We still have about 600 containers that will be delivered, hopefully, in the next six to eight weeks. But in looking at the lead time, we have been ordering another set of containers about once a year. I felt that it might be prudent at this point to go ahead and place another order because if it is another six to eight months in delivery, I think it would be prudent in the rate that containers are going out to have another order of containers in our inventory so that we don't run short again. So I come before you tonight. There's 538 containers here on an additional order. Our assumption is, is that the delivery time on these, although they're telling us 12 to 16 weeks for delivery, our assumption is that's what they told us back in June as well, that it will be at least six months. And so hopefully, we will have our, our first order of containers before the first of the year and that these containers would come in somewhere in the July range. So we're doing this as a prudent scenario so that we don't have new residents come into the town who we cannot issue trash containers to. We certainly have the fund balance to be able to purchase these containers in the sanitation fund. So I'm recommending tonight that you give the authority to Mr. Manuel to allow the town to purchase an additional order of containers, even though we haven't received the first shipment. And I ask for your approval to Soul Sources, to Schaefer, because they have been the company that have produced all of our containers. And we feel as though there's an advantage to having the same container and the same spare parts and everything for the containers that we have. So I bring that to you tonight and ask for your approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Director Stahl, I'm going to start off and ask a quick question. Should we be blessed that all the containers arrive at the same time? Do we have enough storage to make sure that they are stored properly? Or are we going to run into a little bit of problem there?
We actually store them up at the, the old Public Works Facility. And so we do have enough storage to keep them all inside. They, we actually don't put them together. So they come in where they're stacked. And so we do have the room at the old Public Works Facility to keep them inside so that they don't end up with photo degradation in the, and they do appear new. So it hasn't been a problem with storage.
I really appreciate how you are forward-thinking on this. Instead of being reactive, you're being proactive. So thank you very much. I have no problem with that. Council, anyone like to weigh in? Or give your approval or disapproval on this request? And I think we're going to have to take a formal vote afterwards. So I see Jim saying he's okay with that. Evelyn shaking her head. Oh, there was a clap there. How creative. And yes, Mr. Manuel, you'd like to weigh in too. You most certainly may.
Yeah, I do not get to vote, but I just wanted to say, I think we're going to move this forward to next week's agenda.
Okay.
It's the will of the council. Bobby, that's okay with your timeline, correct?
Oh, absolutely, no. I.
Just wanted to make you aware of the situation. And then next week, you'll see the actual legislation before you at the business meeting.
Okay. Can we buy a C for council on there? Where it says. Wheel of fortune, I'd like to buy a CPAT if we could just correct that. And then I think we would be great to sign it. The only one I haven't heard from is Councilman Challenger. Are you okay to move this forward for next week?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Fantastic, all right. That is moving forward. So you are going to be quite busy next week, Director Stahl. So thank you for bringing that to us. And as I said, thank you for being so proactive.
Mayor, and I know this isn't part of the agenda, but I just also wanted to make the council aware and in this public meeting that we completed the paving that we've done so far. And the paving contractor, Mr. Bean, has moved out for a few weeks. And so I just wanted to say how much I appreciated the town and the staff working with us to try and notify people. I know that there was some disconcert, you know, some discontent. But I think all in all, the paving went very smoothly. The people did a very, very good job for us throughout. We do have some additional streets that we want to do, but we got behind on the concrete work. We still are planning to pave over at Calmia Court and Centennial and St. Mary's Avenue. And we still have additional money in the budget to be able to do that. But they, they were, they were pouring, still pouring concrete today. So that we, we may, it is a little bit tricky. They, they did move on to other jobs. CA Bean did. And they're hoping to come back in a few weeks. It is a little tricky this time of year because if the weather turns off in December, that might have to wait till springtime. But it was very important. And I hate to bring that up because it wasn't on the agenda, but I did want to inform everyone as to what that was.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate that. All right, moving on to the next item. We are into our legislation. Ordinance 21-34 is going to be introduced to us tonight. It's the hospital zoning text amendment. Mr. Manuel, I will allow you to introduce it to us.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you stated, ordinance 2134 Hospital Zoning Text Amendment for introduction and ordinance concerning Hospital Zoning Text and MAP Amendment for the purpose of amending Chapter 191 zoning to revise and add definitions to revise existing zoning regulations, requirements, processes, and procedures. And in adding, sorry, this sort of runs together, adding certain terms and all matters generally relating to regulating the development of land in the town.
You did well. It's a very run-on sentence there. No, very good. Thank you very much. So this is just for introduction. And we have seen this through the Planning Commission. This has been in front of us for a few years now. We've been talking about it. The Planning Commission has done, and the Planning Department has done a wonderful job presenting it to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission did approve it. If, I know the applicant is on here, but our public hearing is next week. So if we have any pressing questions, of course, please ask. Or we can reserve it for next week. Do I have any council members that would like to say anything? All right, then we will, oh, Mr. Jenkins, last minute. You got, you got right in there.
Sorry, my mouth was slow. Or I'm sorry. Just, I, not really a question per se, but just, I guess, just some observation and comments. First, thanks to the staff for fully pushing this because I know this has been, and also the applicant, very frankly, because I know this has been on the radar for a while. And it's good to know that there is a cooperative spirit with the hospital and the town and the staff. That's really, really a plus. And by the way, this does check off a block that we've actually, the staff has implemented something. It's in the comp plan that we, that the town adopted it over a year ago. So that's a good thing. And then I just had one, I guess, question that's not necessarily associated with this, but it's related in that this, this will consolidate everything. It'll help, you know, with the site design. It'll help with buffering with the adjacent properties. Is there any impact? Or is there any, any more word on the pedestrian crossing at Charles Street?
That would be Mr. Manuel.
Actually, I'm muted. I apologize. Yeah, I'm working with Jamie Kendricks with Mead and Hunt on that. And we're trying to schedule a meeting to discuss that further. I know that's also wrapped in with the, the trail project that we're working on as well as we are tasking them with some. as we are tasking them with some evaluations of two intersections along St. Mary's Avenue, Centennial and Glen Albin. So it's all part of the picture and I know we're trying to schedule a meeting. We tried to schedule one for next week, but unfortunately I'm on call for jury duty so I can't really get to scheduling any meetings next week. I will not know until five o'clock Sunday night whether, how involved my jury duty will be. So I'm trying to work with Jamie to find a time that we're both available to discuss that further, but it's something we've communicated with MTA, M dot one, and there's a process there. It's just a matter of us plugging in the right pieces at the right time. And we've had conversations about cost sharing in the past, so I think we're going to continue down that, that road. It's just a matter of how it will look in the end.
Thank you for that update. And again, I, I just want to say thanks to, to all parties involved in pushing this forward. Thank you.
Fantastic. Any other questions? All right, we'll see you again next week for the public hearing. That brings us to Matters of Information. Mr. Manuel.
Should have left myself unmuted. Yeah, the only thing I want to bring to your attention is that Kevin and I did meet with our consultant in relation to the ARPA funding and we will be putting out a calendar as far as a public process for that. Kevin, you can feel free to jump in, but I think we've, we're working through some, just some minor sort of evaluations, we'll say, and we should have something for you probably in December. So we just, I know ARPA was mentioned previously as part of the Southwest Quadrant and the options of using ARPA money versus the USDA loan money. But as far as the spending plan goes, we are putting together a calendar and you should, we should have something ready for, for your viewing in the month of December.
Fantastic, because I, I want to spend some money. I got some, I got a million ideas and you guys are working so hard on that and I love that we have the consultant as well. Anything else under Matters of Information?
I have nothing else at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
Uh, just real quick and I, I, we, we just got a, well, at least I got a notification that the crime watch meeting is Thursday, Thursday evening at 7:00 PM.
Wonderful. Yes, that is true. And then on Friday.
And they've been very, and they've been very helpful in terms of getting community engagement and seeing what's going on in all the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay, yes. And if you can attend, you know, if anybody can attend, I teach at that time, so unfortunately I'm unable to attend, but I appreciate you all keeping informed on that. And the other thing is you were sent out invitation. If you haven't seen it, I know several of you have, please do not feel like you have to change your schedules or anything, but we will have the Maryland State Arts Council coming down for a tour and a visit for, to see if we are a good candidate for the Arts and Entertainment District. I will brief you afterwards on our meeting should you not be able to attend, so please do not feel like you have to, but let me know if you can. All right, with that, for future work session topics.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, I think right now we have tentative schedule, of course, be a month out almost. The first work session will be on the 14th of December and we're looking back, bringing back the Vera Mobility Second Amendment to the agreement, which Vera Mobility is the consultant the town uses, utilizes in evaluating red light cameras and sort of speed zone cameras. So that amendment will need to be sort of endorsed by council to year over year. So we'll be getting that to you as well. Michelle may want to be ready to chime in because she also tracks future work session topics. We will also have the annexation 10-411 La Plata Road will be back the 21st, I think it's tentatively scheduled for. And I think Ms. Harrington has also done work on chapter 16 on a code revision that will also be coming back on the 21st. And I believe the 21st is a combined work session slash Town Council meeting due to the holiday later that week. So Michelle, if you have anything to ask, please, or add, please do, because I know you, like I say, you do it also track and Kelly as well. We're sort of a three-headed monster, picks three to replace Danielle, I think, so we're, we're trying our best.
You guys are doing well. Um, with that.
Mr. Manuel, can I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, before I forget what I'm going to say, when we're talking about annexations, could we also add in, and, and not at this time, but when we're talking about the annexation for the La Plata Road, can we get an update on the Oak, the three properties there, whatever it is, if we can get an update on that annexation? And I'm not asking for it this evening, future work session topic.
That was Oak Avenue, you're saying?
Uh, yes.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Stahl, you gonna, you gonna bump out? Councilman Jenkins and Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
I just wanted to, for a future work session, Mr. Manuel, we, we have the major facility fee that I think we're bringing forward in December and I just wanted to.
Yes, thank you, Director Stahl. I don't know how that left my mind.
All right, that was a good one, Bobby. All right, Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. I, I was just, for future, maybe perhaps for a future work session, we can begin to talk about water reuse or recycling. Honestly, we have a water issue and we seem to focus on the groundwater and the appropriation process, which I know is important, but, but I'm just curious or I'm just interested and see if we have any opportunity to look at water reuse, recycling or gray water, because we should really, in, in my opinion, we should be looking at the other option to be more sustainable. So I didn't know if there's anything out there or any opportunity to do that. I know at one time the county was, was pursuing that, but I'm not quite sure what happened. I, I, and I'm just looking at this from more of another option and as part of a sustainability process.
Brent, did you want to say something to that fact?
Yeah, I, I did before Bobby unloaded, so I wanted to try to, this notes version, but yeah, the town did propose like a purple line. I think it's preferred to as a reuse way back when and it was a little, I think at the time, a little too advanced for the state to even comprehend. It would have been part of the, I guess, when the town did the, of course Bobby's going to jump in and correct me, but I think it was part of the Willa Lane Pump Station. The idea was to run a purple line, sort of not co-locate, but sort of along the same lines. And then, you know, we could have eventually got it out to say Heritage, or not Heritage Green, but Rosewick Road, which could potentially can, I was just thinking how we could get it to a golf course because there, there are usually a good reuser of water. But you know, there are some possibly possibilities. I'm sure it would qualify under the ARPA funding. I think it was a missed opportunity back then, but it's something that we may be able to explore further because there is, I think, an upgrade to a, it won't go all the way to the plant, Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a force main that will run up from Route Six, what, all the way to the Kent Square?
The, the, the D.R. Horton companies will have to upgrade the existing force main that's in there. There's currently a 12-inch force main. They will have to add at some point a second 12-inch force main. And so when they're coming up Caroline Drive all the way up to the La Plata Mill property, there will certainly be the opportunity to add a, what would be considered a gray water line into that same area. The, we did approach the state about this because at the time when we did this, which was back in the 2008 to 2010, when we were permitting the Willa Lane Pump Station, we wanted to put in a 12-inch gray water line because at that time, they were still proposing to have a golf course on Heritage Green. What we have talked about, and Mayor, you know, in our meetings with Secretary Grumbles, we have talked about that and we have brought to D.R. Horton's attention that we would like to have a second, a gray water line all the way up to Rosewick Road and be part of a loop with the county so that things like the new power plant up by the landfill, things like also up at the power plant in Brandywine. The sad thing is, we originally wanted to provide the water for the power plant at Morgantown, but that was a little bit too far down. They, they felt the expense was too much and the state kind of shot us in the foot because they gave them an appropriation permit out of the river. So there have been some challenges. The, the Morgantown Power Plant did install a reverse osmosis system down there at the, at the power plant. And so now there's some options down there. I mean, at some point, we may look at trying to bring treated surface water up from the power plant. So I mean, it may be something that we look the opposite way. So there, there are quite a few options. I'd be happy to put something together for a future work session. I think it's a wonderful idea. I will also, Bill and I have been working on a chart that dates back to 2006. And what I want to show you, and I will make that part of my presentation for my, for next week, that will actually show you water consumption on an annual basis from 2006 all the way to 2021. And we'll also do that for sewer. So you'll see how much water. And the interesting thing is, is that even though from 2006 to 2021, our water, our daily water consumption has actually gone down and not up, even though the population of La Plata has increased by almost 1,500 residents based on the 2020 census. So I think we want to see that, take a look at that, and I'll put a presentation together as far as other work, I mean, excuse me, as water reuse.
Well, uh, 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 thank you, because I, I think that's exactly from, again, speaking for me, I, I think that's exactly the kind of, as a mayor alluded to earlier, forward thinking that we really need to pursue. And then having that factual data honestly will help the town make really informed decisions. Thank you for that.
Wonderful. And Councilwoman Bryant Ward, you've just been raising your hand so nicely there. What, what have you got?
So I just wanted to ask if we could bring the Comcast conversation back. We still have not, you know, heard the, you know, what the outcome of that was and I would just like to know.
Fantastic. Thank you. Oh, I see two hands. I don't know who went up first. It's a shoot between Janine and Brent, whoever wants to go in.
I just quickly wanted to ask what specific updates you were looking for on the Oak Avenue annexations.
Um, where are we in that process? I know that they have been hanging out there. Is it going to be a quick one? It's still not being funded by the state?
No, it is. Um, and so that's why I can give you that update right now if you want.
Oh, sure. Why not?
So Oak Avenue, Scroggins Street. What was the other one that we had out there?
I thought there were two on Oak, there were two on Oak, 214, 216 maybe, and then.
108 Scroggins. But anyway, all of those were approved, done. This county amended their water and sewer plan. The state changed them to priority funding area. The Health Department is currently getting the funds together and we're getting ready to issue any permits that are associated with it. The only one that there's an issue on is 143 Morgan's Ridge Road where the state says that it does not meet their warrants for priority funding area and they will not change it. So it's still shown as a priority funding area comment area. So I will have to apply for an exception with the Maryland Department of the Environment in order to try to get funding through the Health Department for them to connect to water and sewer.
Well, you know what, Director Harrington, you have worked long and hard on that and that is fantastic news. So thank you for sharing that with us and I'm sure that those three residents are very pleased that they have you in their corner. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Mayor, if I could, I could also further update that we are installing the sewer line for 214 Oak tomorrow.
Oh, timely.
Hardy Underground is doing the work. It was all approved by the Health Department and that work, that line will be going in tomorrow. So I have scheduled time to go out there with Hardy Underground to work with them tomorrow.
That's wonderful. I love it when a plan finally comes together. So thank you, everyone, for all of your hard work. Appreciate that. Anything else on future work session topics? All right, that brings us to the public forum. If everyone, if anyone would like to speak, I'd ask that you please state your name, your address and whether you're in the Incorporated Town Limits and please make sure that it is three minutes or less.
I'd like to say something, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Mike Runfola, 113 Marsh Drive within the Incorporated Town Limits. As you know, I've accepted the five-minute time period to speak next week and as I understand it, I've been given till this Thursday, the 18th, by noon to submit any extra materials that I plan to use, but not necess, not necessarily what I'm.
Oh, go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, I, I just want to clarify, I don't need to submit what I'm going to actually say. Is that correct?
Well, Mr. Runfola, that you don't even have to worry about next week because last week you had said that you would like to speak and that, actually at 8:13 PM last week, you said that this is a formal, you said, how is this not a formal ask, Mayor? And that you would like to do that and you heard from all council members? So what I would ask from you is if you would like to supply any type of documentation to help the council members, because all four of them had indicated that they had no idea what you were talking about, but you still wanted to seize the moment there and I appreciate that. So that way, if you would like to submit something for, for all of us to review, that would be, that would be great, but you will not be an agenda my item next week because we took the opportunity last week, per your request, to have council answer what you were.
Not really, Mayor. This, this came about, your offer came about after I spoke.
Um, actually, I have the transcript right in front of me. I have the transcript right in front of me. So that's at 8:13, you said, how is this not a formal request, Mayor? This is a formal request. And I said, at 8:14, I said, okay, you said they had, had time to think about this. This is a topic that they are not unfamiliar with. And so I said, all right, council, would anyone like to weigh in? Councilman Jenkins started off and he weighed in, followed by Councilwoman Bryant Ward, followed by Councilman Goldsmith and last was Councilman Trolinger. So they all did weigh in and at that point, when you.
They never answered the questions that I asked. And then when you made the offer and I accepted, and then at the, I think the end of the meeting, it was brought up that if I was going to submit materials, I had to do it by noon this Thursday.
And absolutely, please submit the material. It will be reviewed, it can be reviewed by council, but it will not be, you will not be a line item on there because you did take that opportunity last week, which we greatly appreciate.
I, I, I'm totally confused, Mayor. You made the offer to me to speak for five minutes and I graciously accepted.
You did and then, and you did, you accepted at 8:11 and then you went on and.
What does the time have to do with anything?
Just, just so that you know that there is a transcript of this so that you, in case you think I'm making anything up, which I'm not, and, and then you went on afterwards when I said, I said, do you want, my question was, by you trying to explain to them, I said, oh, here it is. Okay, I said, will you wait for council to weigh in until next week? And can you choose to hear, I said, and choose until you hear the formal ask? And you said, this is the formal ask. So that is where.
The way we, well, the way we left that conversation, Mayor, was you made the offer, I accepted, in fact, I accepted twice. And then there was discussion about if I had any extra materials, I had to submit them by noon this Thursday. Now I'm asking you, I do plan to speak next week if you'll allow it still, and I don't think what I am going to say needs to be submitted in advance. If I'm going to use any extra materials, I understand that, I will submit them if, by the deadline that you asked. But they never answered my questions and I wanted to address that again.
Then you will next week have the opportunity through the public comment section there and it will be limited to the three minutes on there, but you know, we're not very tight on that. So if you happen to go to five minutes.
I know and I appreciate that. I'll do it during the public forum then, fine.
Okay, thank you very much.
And if you like, the next.
And if you like, the next day I will leave you a copy of what I actually say.
That would be wonderful. We could put that into the record. So thank you.
Very good.
Would anybody else like to speak this evening? All right. So brings us to the last agenda item, adjournment. Does anybody, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to point out the fact that this is less than an hour. I recommend adjourn.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed motion carriers? Thank you all. Have a great weekend. And I will see you next week. Great meeting.
Thanks to everybody. Thanks to staff again. Thank you. Good night.